Okay, I have it as nine eleven. And Tuesday the sixteenth. So good morning, everyone. As Chair of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees, I will call to order the special meeting of the board. The purpose of this meeting is consideration of our proposed settlement agreement in Florida Virtual School versus D two L Corporation and D two L Limited. Case number six twenty C V zero one seven eight eight R B D D C I. A federal court lawsuit currently pending before the Orlando Division of the United States District Court in and for the middle district of Florida. Please note, I will not call for opening or closing comments of the board members, the CEO, CEO of the General Counsel during this meeting. However, I will reserve time for such comments during the board's agenda review workshop meeting, which will take place after we adjourn the special meeting of the board. Mr. Moore, will you please call roll?
Dr. John Watret.
Present.
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Present.
Dr. Tony Arsa.
Present.
Ms. Kelly Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Edward Poswoli.
Present.
Mr. Robert Conerens.
Present.
All present, so thank you. We will now move to the General Counsel reports and presentation items at section two of our special meeting, uh, meeting agenda. Dr. Dagata, please proceed.
It is my pleasure, and it will be your pleasure in my taking mercy on everyone here by trying to speak as little as possible. For tho- that reason, we have brought in our esteemed outside counsel, Rob Thielhelm from Baker Hostetler Law Firm. Um, and we have on standby in the waiting room, um, Rob's partner, Lindy Cowan, and our senior assistant general counsel, Louis Guzman, all of whom, uh, despite my interference, have done a fabulous job in representing F L V S in this federal litigation. So I've asked Rob to kind of lay out uh, where we're at, just the procedural posture of the case and a little bit of a backdrop, if not just for board members, but also for the public at large. So with that, and and I'll tell you afterwards, I'll butt in like I always do and give you a little bit of a view of of the proposed settlement agreement, and then turn things back uh, to our chair for um, the board's consideration of our recommendation uh, to consider and adopt the um, settlement agreement. And that, of course, uh, comes after a a public comment period. So with that, I'll yield the floor uh, to Mr. Rob Thielhelm.
Thank you, David. Uh, as David said, my name is Rob Thielhelm. I'm outside counsel with Baker and Hostetler. And represented Florida Virtual School in this lawsuit filed in the middle district of Florida against, uh, originally against D two L. Actually, two separate entities in D two L. It's not necessarily important what those entities were. They were the contracting parties under an agreement, uh, which we were commonly referred to as the two thousand eighteen agreement. It was essentially for the the purchase and services associated with uh, the Brightspace L M S provided by D two L. And ultimately, our claims were uh, essentially efforts to uh, establish uh, as a matter of law that those, that that agreement, the two thousand eighteen agreement was void uh, for failure to comply with the competitive solicitation process that such contracts are required to go through. In response to the complaint, D two L filed a counterclaim seeking to recover about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars uh, uh, under a two thousand sixteen agreement that had been previously terminated uh, by Florida Virtual School pursuant to its terms. The case went through uh, discovery, both uh, production of documents, effectively extensive production of documents, and then uh, a series of depositions. Uh, at the conclusion of discovery, both sides moved for summary judgment, uh, seeking a judgment as a matter of law, uh, in their respective positions. The court in February of this year granted summary judgment establishing that the two thousand eighteen in in our favor, uh, establishing that the two thousand eighteen agreement was void. Uh, and uh, also that um, the the court granted summary judgment in our favor on D twelve's counterclaim for six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. So in other words, D two L could not recover from Florida Virtual School, and the two thousand eighteen agreement was determined to be void for failure to comply with and engage in competitive solicitation. Under normal circumstances, under the law, because the two thousand eighteen agreement was void, there would be complete disgorgement of all monies paid by Florida Virtual School to D twelve under that contract. That amount of money was five million, three hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars over in essentially two, uh, three installment payments. Uh, the court, however, uh, latched onto, if I could describe it that way, an exception that it believed exists under the law under limited circumstances to allow D two L to recover its actual reasonable costs, but not profit. In other words, D twelve, instead of complete disgorgement of the five point three million, would, under certain circumstances, be entitled to retain, in the court's view, uh, reasonable costs. The court then scheduled a hearing despite entering summary judgment, scheduled an evidentiary hearing for June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-two this year. And uh, for the express purpose of establishing what those reasonable costs were and whether or not D twelve was entitled to them. The basic principles of law that the court would be looking at and or fact that the court would be looking at would have been whether or not D twelve complied in good faith or thought it was complying in good faith with the requirements for competitive solicitation, whether or not D twelve provided a public benefit and whether or not the cost, what amount of cost were reasonable. D twelve sought at least uh, three and a half million, if not a little bit more, in costs out of the five point three that it had been paid. Leading up to that hearing, essentially five days before, uh, well, about maybe ten days before D twelve reached out and asked to engage in some settlement discussions. Uh, by June twenty-fifth, those settlement discussions had um, materialized to a point where a proposed settlement, recognizing that any settlement would need to be approved by this board. But uh, there was uh, a proposed settlement agreement confirmed via email uh, on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, five days before the evidentiary hearing was to occur. The parties then, uh, two days later filed a joint motion to continue that evidentiary hearing. The court granted that motion to continue the hearing, so the hearing did not go forward, and then also stayed the case pending uh, this court's opportunity to review a settle, a a proposed settlement agreement. Uh, at the present time, that the case will stay stayed until August twenty-ninth, when we collectively, both parties have to report back to the court to advise the court whether or not the proposed settlement agreement was approved by this board. Now, between June twenty-seventh and this past Friday, the parties have been engaged in documenting and executing a conditional settlement agreement. And they have finally reached an agreement, at least in 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 terms of a conditional proposed settlement agreement for this board to consider. And I believe that that has been circulated to all of you. And at this point, uh, I certainly can answer any additional questions that anyone may have. But I'll turn it over back over to David so that he can give you the particulars uh, of the settlement agreement, the proposed settlement agreement, and I believe also his recommendation along with Dr. Algaze's recommendation.
And mind you, we'll be here, uh, if and when, uh, the board wishes, uh, to discuss things or has any questions of us, uh, towards the end of the meeting. So, uh, look, the long and the short of it is, we had a case, uh, that revolved around, uh, an agreement uh, that would have had us pay um, eleven million dollars, uh, for goods and services that we knew could not work. It was born of a contract, as Rob said, which was deemed void, uh, by the court as well, deemed void for lack of a competitive solicitation. So what is, what remains at hand really is uh, somewhere around uh, five million dollars in dispute. That is, money's paid already to D two L. And how much, uh, if if any of it, D two L gets to keep. We believe that there is um, complete disgorgement, that complete disgorgement of all monies that were paid over on unauthorized contract are due uh, to be returned. Obviously, the court has shown, um, not an entire, it hasn't embraced, at least overtly, that uh, view. So what's at hand? Um, five million dollars. And as is stated in the settlement agreement in um, the settlement amount and payment on page three. By the way, this was, uh, of course, posted uh, to the public agenda as well, and I hope that the board members have had sufficient time to look through it. But we're looking, paragraph four of the settlement agreement really um, defines how we got to the number, and that is, uh, basically payment by D two L to F L V S uh, in the amount of three point two five million, a little bit over that. And in return, uh, the two sides go their separate ways. Uh, there's a complete release. Um, the intellectual property that uh, were was brought to the table from uh, either side during their, uh, the course of their work and business together um, is kept. Okay, that was very important. And any, I call it secret sauce, uh, is returned to the uh, owning party. And then, of course, most importantly, well, as importantly, at least for us, is that any uh, education records that were exchanged uh, over the course of business are preserved and returned to us. So the the other uh, part of the settlement agreement that the, you know, parties were kind of wrangling over, and it's really just a matter of becoming adjusted to the fact that we are a public agency. And there's a thing called public records in the sunshine law, which is why we're meeting in public. Um, there is this anti-disparagement clause or non-disparagement clause in confidentiality um, that importantly, uh, when you read it, it preserves all of the rights that uh, Florida citizens have in an open um, government. While we are um, agreeing um, to not make, um, you know, statements to the press or press releases, so to speak, um, we are also pointing to the public record, this settlement agreement, all of the docs uh, filed in the federal lawsuit. Um, and by the way, at the end of the thirty day period following the entry of judgment, uh, even the transcripts from shade meetings become public record. So that was very important to us, uh, to make sure that uh, public records was was adhered to strictly and that the sunshine uh, came on it, and it will remain it. So, uh, we are, uh, and when I say we, um, Dr. Algaze and I, um, in consultation with outside counsel are very much supportive of the terms agreement. Um, and as is shown in the recommended action, uh, we're asking for the board to adopt, uh, authorize the agreement and authorize, uh, Dr. A's execution of the same. So with that, I will turn it back to Dr. Watret, and remember, we can have questions and answers, uh, during the discussion of any motion.
Thank you, Dr. Dagata. Board members, are there any questions from, from you? Any clarification issues?
I have, I have one question. In in the email that you sent with the attachment, there was an issue with paragraph nineteen. Is that what you're talking about right now? And that all got settled out?
We resolved, yes, to our satisfaction.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, no, that, yeah, okay, thank you.
I've, uh, you know, just to understand it, I hear that it wasn't a competitive solicitation. Um, and then I also hear the system would not work. But it sounds like we got out on the competitive situ- uh, solicitation. What did, what did they do wrong to get to to have that as a defense for us?
Well, the competitive solicitation, really what was done wrong is the whole twenty eighteen, what I call twenty eighteen unauthorized contract. Um, in twenty eighteen, the form of the contract uh, was vastly different from the twenty sixteen contract. Twenty sixteen contract was, in fact, competitive, uh, uh, under the competitive solicitation in invitation to negotiate. There was no competitive solicitation. And the parties knew or should have known, the law imposes, uh, you know, knowledge, reasonable knowledge, that when you deal with a public agency in a an acquisition of this nature and this amount, we're talking about an eleven million dollar contract over the course of five years, there has got to be a competitive solicitation. The thing that the, and that is just as a matter of law, uh, both parties should have known that it didn't happen, uh, therefore it's void. The court agreed. What the court left open, the, uh, board member Conerens, is this concept that D two may be entitled to keep some of, uh, that five million dollars in its hands um, based on quantum merit. That is, uh, based on its good faith performance, although a mistaken performance of the unauthorized agreement. Uh, respectfully, F L V S and its counsel disagrees with that, but he's the judge. And that's what we have left is the evidentiary hearing for the judge to determine, uh, whether, uh, there is any ground for D two L to keep some of that money, the five million essentially, uh, in its coffers. Um, and of course, there's al- always the threat of it being, uh, well south of the offer on the table. Um, and all of the work that goes along with, you know, analyzing whether there should appeal, there should be an appeal, and the cost and burden of an appeal. So that's, that's essentially where we're at.
Yeah, no, I I'm, I think you and everybody have done an excellent job getting us to this point. It's, I'm not disputing the amounts, and I think there is risk if we do go forward with, you know, they could get more than that. So I I'm agreeing. I'm just more as a contractor, trying to understand the the metrics, but more importantly, what's the lessons learned from Florida Virtual School on the solicitation process and, you know, the system, your word, system would not work. You know, what what did we learn from this? So we don't do it again, I guess.
I think there's an awful lot, uh, that has been learned here. And it's funny that you should bring that up because I was just speaking yesterday uh, to Dr. A and the leadership team um, in kind of packaging up, um, and continuing with um, the training that is routinely given, not only to staff, but also a train that might be available, uh, to the board as well, just to explain the procurement process and uh, the lessons. Um, we we learn something new every day. When it comes to the contractor's side, and I have been part of many disputes of this nature, commercial disputes, it, there is this um, sense of inequity, I guess you could say, um, where private actors contract with government agencies in the state of Florida. And uh, Florida law uh, imposes upon them the burden to know what the rules are and the burden to comply with those rules, even if the government gets it wrong. So that's the the rub, um, from, uh, you know, a broad view. Uh, that's not going to change. I don't see, think anytime soon in in Florida law. That's just the, that's just the, uh, fact that that's the law that applies. So, and and I'll tell you, there there really are, uh, lessons to be learned on uh, on the part of every party here.
So David, David, just to, um, piggyback on on that answer you just gave, whose responsibility was it, or what department was responsible for this contract that we we didn't ensure that, um, that it was done, that there was, um, a competitive solicitation?
So things have changed over time. And let me just tell you that the twenty eighteen unauthorized contract uh, in my study of the record was a contract that was born of just a few people. Um, and, uh, they were former, uh, CEO, uh, the former General Counsel. It didn't go through the normal, um, you know, means and methods by which competitive solicitations are put. So I can tell you, that's, that's not the case at at F L V S in this day and age.
Right, that's what I wanted to ask. This wouldn't happen again, based on what's changed since, um, since that time.
So, but that wouldn't happen again because you're all there. But how do we make sure this doesn't happen? Like, if you're not in the future, and I have one more question. And we, well, why have you? Just to play devil's advocate, what would happen if we didn't approve this settlement today? What would, like, the next step be? Just?
Yeah, so to answer question one, uh, this is the glory of all of the policy work that this board has undertaken. One of the policies that was given, uh, a a new uh, look and was sub- substantially, uh, overhauled was the purchasing policy that makes very, very clear and certainly clarifies even certain things that we were kind of scratching our head over uh, as to what the policies and the practices looked like in days of old. Okay, that's the answer, number one. Uh, the 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 question, number two, what are we facing if we reject? The parties have got to report back to the court on or before August twenty-ninth, um, what the board did. Did it adopt and accept, or did it reject? It's my understanding, uh, and reading of the tea leaves that, uh, once, uh, if if the parties were to report back to the court that there has been no deal, that the court would promptly, uh, reset the evidentiary hearing to determine how much, if any, of the five million dollars ought D two L be, uh, able to keep.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And so David, just a little follow-up, but, uh, was this, this eleven million contract back in twenties eighteen, sixteen to eighteen? Was it, did it, was that approved by the then board?
Yes, so there there was the twenty sixteen contract, which was totally approved. It went through the right, all the hoops. Um, it was for seven million dollars, and it was for services that were needed. It's what we wanted. Customized, uh, type of services, a customized L M S that we ended up achieving uh, through reinvestment into our own L M S. Um, the second twenty eighteen unauthorized agreement didn't, it didn't go through, uh, the the hoops that are necessary. That's all I can tell you. That's what the record has beared up.
Okay. And that's, that probably supports, at least that was the hook that the judge found. And allowing them to collect quantum merit costs recovery.
Yeah, that that span of time, right, between the twenty sixteen and the twenty eighteen. By the way, um, Rob, um, as usual, he was very accurate in, um, describing the counterclaim that was kind of tied to work allegedly done, um, as an extension of the twenty sixteen agreement, but it was clearly out of scope. And the counterclaim was, uh, north of six hundred thousand dollars plus twenty percent per annum, which began in twenty seventeen. So really, that was, um, more than a million dollars by the time the thing was teed up for, uh, litigation.
Okay, thank. Any further questions from the board members?
No, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think my button was on mute there. Uh, also, you might recall from a prior meeting that the auditor has this, uh, on her list of things, just to reassure that the policies that and procedures that we have had in place since we've been here are continued to be followed.
That's good. Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, we will proceed to the public comment. Uh, next, I will open the floor for public comment. Before we begin, I would like to ask speakers to observe the following ground rules pursuant to the board's bylaws. Public comments should be pertinent to board agenda items. Each speaker is limited to a two-minute comment period and cannot yield time to another speaker. If the speaker runs out of time, then written comments may may be submitted. Speakers must state their first and last name for the record before delivering their comments. Speakers may ask questions, but board members and F L V S officials are not required to respond. Rather, it shall be their prerogative to respond, and the board chair will take up any such responses after the public comment period. Further speakers should note that this meeting, including the public comment period, is being recorded. Operator, are there any members of the public who have called in and wish to speak to the board?
No callers for public comment.
Thank you. Given no callers, this concludes the public comment period. We'll go to a discussion agenda. We will now move to the discussion item at section four of our special meeting agenda. Board members, are there any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the recommendation, recommended action on agenda item four point one? And that that agenda action item is to approve the approved, to approve the proposed settlement agreement and authorization for the CEO to execute the same, the form and substance of which shall be the same or substantially similar to that which is attached to the agenda item as exhibit A.
The move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, any further discussion by board members? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Or or I I, excuse me, are there any, any opposed? Hearing none, so the motion does carry unanimously. Thank you. We'll now turn to adjourn, uh, turn to adjourn of this special meeting, after which the board will reconvene for our gender review workshop meeting. Is there a motion adjourned?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Rob.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Wrong, Rob.
Both of you.
Um, right, and now, um, it is nine forty. So given, uh, good morning again, and we'll call to order this agenda review workshop meeting of the Florida Virtual School Board of Trustees. The purpose of the workshop is to develop and discuss agenda items which may present, may be presented to the board for consideration and potential action at its quarterly meeting on September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. On behalf of Board of Trustees, I welcome everyone in attendance and thank my fellow board members, Florida Virtual School CEO and all Florida Virtual School staff members who have prepared us for today's workshop, and I must say they always do a great job in that preparation. With that stated, With that stated, let's proceed to the roll call. Mr. Moore, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Want, John Rotret.
Present.
Ms. Linda Ryder.
Present.
Dr. Tony Arsa.
Present.
Ms. Kelly Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Edward Posoli.
Present.
And Mr. Robert Conerans.
Present.
Thank you very much. And now we'll we'll go to opening remarks, but prior to that, I would like to just make a statement. Um, you know, I want to just take a moment uh to share our condolences uh to you and the entire team for the passing of our colleague and friend Eric Braun. Eric served as the Chief Administrative Officer for Florida Virtual Schools for the last three years. He certainly was passionate about finding ways to help children succeed, and he serves Florida Virtual Schools with excellence. I was fortunate to have had the opportunity to meet with Eric a few times over the past three years, even given COVID. We had some dinners at graduations. You know, he was always full of life and brought humor to every occasion. It was a privilege to have been able to work with him in that short time, and I'm truly sorry for his loss. With that, I would like to ask our board members for opening remarks and then call on Madame Poche and Ms. Ryder for any comments.
I don't want to make any other comments other than thank you for saying that and that um all our prayers and thoughts are with not only FLVS, but also with his family. So just to let them know that we're all thinking of him.
Thank you. Board member, Arza.
Yeah, same. I want to read it the same, that our prayers are with uh Eric's family and uh it's a tragic situation, so.
Thank you. Board member, Mrs. Garcia.
We're um so sorry for that loss, and I think it was a very nice words you said about him and um thankful for his service, and I'll continue to pray for his family.
Thank you. Board, board member Connor Hamers.
Yeah, thoughts and prayers, family, uh, you know, it's just a a young man and uh puts life in perspective on on you got to live every day and uh love your family and what you do, like he did.
And board member Posoli.
Uh, condolences to the family um at home and in in our FLVS family as well. Um, great contribution and he will be missed.
Thank you all for your comments, and he will be missed. He was truly was a a vibrant person in the in the Florida Virtual Schools, and he will be missed, and prayers to his family. So thank you all. Now turn to Dr. Algas to lead today's presentation and discussion of proposed agenda items. Dr. Algas, it's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you all for your kind words um about Eric. We're all going to greatly miss him. Such a wonderful human being, wonderful family man, amazing wife and children. Uh, and he brought everybody so much joy with his amazing sense of humor. It's going to be a a big void in our lives without him. And we pray that his family finds solace in the love that we all had for him here. Thank you all again. Uh, purpose of today's workshop is to review the proposed agenda for September twenty seventh, two thousand twenty-two quarterly board meeting. I'll walk through our leadership team's proposed agenda items with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions along the way. And of course, some available afterwards if you have any other questions that may pop up before the meeting. Uh, so the first item will be the approval of minutes, and it'll be requested for the Board of Trustees June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two quarterly board meeting minutes and for the minutes of today's workshop. Uh, Board of Trustees, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two special meeting and August sixteen, twenty twenty-two agenda review workshop meeting minutes. Item three will be the public comments period, and following that period, I'll present item four, the CEO report. Uh, the June fourteen CEO comments reports and presentation will include four items. The first will be the quarterly financial report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Corey Wheeler, Senior Director of Financial and Treasury Services, will present the four four point two, the unedited financial report for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, which is prepared under generally accepted governmental accounting requirements. Four point three, I will present the district franchise report. And four point four, Beth Brunard, manager for the FLVS Foundation, will share with you the FLVS Foundation's September twenty-two quarterly report. Item five will have proposed consent contract items. Uh, we'll have four proposed contract items for consent for the board's consideration and approval. And Joanne Sarah is here, and she's uh Senior Director of Procurement, and she'll review items five point one through five point four. Joanne, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Algas. Oh, hold on one second. Sorry, I lost my notes. Okay, thank you, Dr. Algas. Good morning, board members. It is a pleasure to see you all this morning. Uh, this morning, we have four agenda items for procurements and contracts. As always, I welcome your questions on these items, so please stop me along the way. My first item for your consideration is five point one, hosted assessment solutions. We're requesting the board to approve the award and authorize the president and CEO to execute the contract for a hosted assessment solution to Evo Text Inc. And this contract is still under negotiation, so some of this information, um, such as the final cost and fiscal impact may change slightly. But ideally, or the general um idea of the hosted assessment solution is it will have the ability to securely provide FLVS proprietary assessment data to a variety of learning management systems, uh both our own in-house systems and the systems that are used to support our to support our customers on the FlexPoint side. It's going to improve how we deliver assessments, uh give us the ability to meditate, metadata tag those assessments. Um, each assessment question will be associated with a specific course or module, state standard to which it aligns for improved reporting and analytics. The estimated cost at this point, again, we are still finalizing the implementation statement of work and the full scope. However, the estimated impact is not to exceed seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand uh for the first year and four hundred and forty-nine thousand per fiscal year for the remainder of the five-year contract term. The contract will have three optional one-year renewals. Uh, the basis of this award is competitive solicitation RFP, and I know that it just come up in the special board meeting, so I want to be sure you are aware. Any questions on that item? Okay.
I've just one quick one.
Sure.
You know, in case they don't perform, what is our, in the five-year period, what's our out for that?
We always maintain the right to terminate our agreements. Um, usually, there the standard is a thirty-day notice to to go. So in in implementation such as this, where we are customizing, we're testing the delivery to LMSs, um, we've had product demos on the front end, our confidence when we award something like this is is very high. But we do always maintain an an out.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, five dot two is digital marketing analytics, media buying and media planning services. Uh, we're requesting the board to approve the award and authorize the president and CEO to execute the contracts for digital marketing analytics, media buying and media planning uh services with Fry Hammond Bar Incorporated, doing business as Ann Barr. This was awarded by an RFP. We received five responses to the RFP, five proposals. Three were short lifted, shortlisted, excuse me. Um, however, two withdrew, and we in the evaluation committee decided to move forward with Ann Barr, who is the incumbent for these services. Uh, they'll use their expertise and knowledge of business strategies and their ability to communicate, collaborate, and present strategic media solutions that support our priorities. Our primary focus will be quality lead generation and enrollment conversion strategies for growth and development of FLVS uh B to C and the FlexPoint business. As you discussed at the beginning of the call, um, you know, you're in other states and you see K twelve advertising. Uh, we need to make sure that nationwide we are known as an option um to provide these courses and provide curriculum for other school districts. So this is why this is important for our for our organization to grow. Uh, if awarded, the initial term of the contract will be for five years with three optional one-year renewals. Again, we would maintain the right to terminate for convenience, so there is no lock-in here. Um, in all the spend for this contract is really based upon budgets. We determine the budget for any particular campaign, and it's up to Ann Barr and their their job and duty to produce a campaign within that budget that has maximum return. Again, the basis of award is competitive solicitation and RFP process. Any questions on this item?
So most of this marketing will go to FlexPoint to to get, uh, you know, awareness outside of Florida, or is it balanced between um FLVS in Florida and FlexPoint?
Um, I believe it's, i- it really changes depending on the campaign. We have certain strategic campaigns that happen um that associate with our enrollments as well as some national campaigns. But I would like to call up um for any particular marketing strategy questions. I'd like to call up our Director of Digital Strategy, uh, Mr. Matthew Santa Marina. And I I think you may have some more questions, so it might be a good idea to pull him in now.
Before we pull him in, this is probably something you can answer better.
Sure.
Why does it go from like one point four and then the fourth or fifth year, it's four point two and four point nine?
Okay, part of that, he can actually, marketing can weigh in on that, but the one thing I do want you to know is we're asking for authority based upon fiscal year. So this contract, the first number that you see and the last number that you see are actual six-month periods, not the full fiscal year for this contract because of the contract terms. Uh, the middle ones are the full fiscal year, and I believe there was a very specific strategy around those numbers and targeting markets um that Mr. Santa Marina can.
Yeah, they're far off. Yeah, okay, okay.
But yeah, the the first and last are six months because of the contract term.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so thank you for having me. Um, yes, the budget is between the FlexPoint initiatives and FLVS initiatives uh in Florida, so there is a distribution between uh each.
Okay.
Any other questions on this item? Marketing strategy, how we use the firm.
I guess one one thing, uh, you know, we'll lot, since launching F uh FlexPoint, how how successful have we been? What what kind of numbers have we seen in in the FlexPoint? Uh, and is that, is that uh one of the key components of uh the marketing campaign to to increase FlexPoint?
Overall, when we were looking at our RO, ROR, uh, sorry, ROI numbers, you know, we looked at it collectively as an organization, um, and we've had about this year uh twelve hundred percent ROI on our marketing efforts. So um FlexPoint is a portion of that ROI, and we're in still in that growth period right now, so um we're really looking at it from a whole organization standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on?
No.
Okay. Okay, our next item, five point three, is a placeholder for our annual professional learning conference venue and hotel accommodations. If you remember the last board meeting, you approved the estimated budget for event years twenty-two, this current year, and twenty-three. The RFP award, uh, which allowed us to schedule those events has expired or has no more renewals, so we are going back out to competitive solicitation RFP to award um new contracts for the venue and hotel accommodations. This would be starting with the twenty twenty-four event venue. Uh, we've really looked across central Florida based upon the highest concentration of where our employees live in Florida, and the evaluation committee will be awarding or looking to award the most economical solution for both hotel and venue costs. This could be one hotel group. It may be combination of meeting space and hotel room blocks. We're trying to be creative, again, to be as most fiscally responsible as we can for this award. The RFP is currently on the street. We are evaluating, the proposals are due August nineteenth, and the evaluation committee will be meeting August twenty-second. Um, the reason this is a placeholder is because we want to be sure that we are able to have a potential award by September so that we can start booking out those dates. I think, as you know, especially when you're looking in central Florida, we are a very popular destination. An event our size really does book out several years. The term of this award would be for five annual conferences. We'd book the first one or two right away and then wait probably a year or so before we secure the next dates, but we would be allowed to, under this award, book up to five annual conference events. Any questions on this one?
So this, the twenty twenty-two is in the Rosen Center, correct?
Correct, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three are in the Rosen Center.
Okay, so they're they're both there. So this is, this would be twenty-four through twenty-nine.
Yes.
Okay.
Which I know it seems far out, but really, these large conference spaces, they book very early. Any other questions on this item? Okay. My last item today is ServiceNow licensing under General Services Administration. That's the federal GSA. Uh, we are looking to renew our contract for the ServiceNow Software as a Service, which provides enterprise enterprise cloud support services. Uh, we've been using ServiceNow at FLVS for, geez, I think at least seven or eight years, probably longer. Uh, we've procured it several different ways throughout the year. We're always looking for the most, um, the best fiscal deer, deal with the most value. Uh, after speaking to ServiceNow and some other resellers, this seems to be the best solution for us. We are waiting for the final quotation, which will be ready prior to the September board. We're anticipating a not to exceed of eight hundred thousand. We're working with our IT team to make sure that we are really procuring everything that we need and not more. I think you know, as the software as a service often have uh many different modules and options, and and we're really looking to customize it or customize what we're purchasing anyways to our exact needs. We anticipate this will be a one-year renewal on the September board. Um, however, if it's fiscally advantageous to sign a multi-year renewal, we may be bringing that in September. We'll certainly keep the board posted. Any questions on this?
So is is all the RIT in the cloud now, using cloud, or is are we still use, does FLVS use storage? So.
Um, I believe it's still a combo, but I would really like, if you have any specific IT questions, I'd love to pull up Phil Bertolo to answer those questions for you, or perhaps Sam?
I could, I could take that, Dr. Let's try it. Just the short of it is, definitely, it's a hybrid solution right now. Uh, I think the goal of the team from a technology side is to constantly move to the cloud as much as possible with whatever application that is, or whatever footprint we have, you know, related to our products and our IP or the vendors that we're using. And most of, most of what we have really is in the cloud when you look at our footprint of what we do here. And that's always the plan to keep on using that economy of scale to keep moving to the cloud for everything that we're doing.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for me on these four procurement items? All right. Well, thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Joanne, as always. Uh, next section, section six, uh for proposed consent will be the annual reports and forms. Uh, we'll be presenting seven reports for consent and approval. First is six point one. It's our quarterly staff data report. We, as we do every quarter, this report summarizes personnel actions from the last quarter. Since all employees are on annual contracts, this first staff data report of the uh year, fiscal year, uh will include all employees. Uh, six point two is the next one. That's the Uniform Assessment Calendar for FLVS Full-Time Schools. Each school district must complete the Florida Department of Education Uniform Calendar Template, which includes district-referred assessments, information with assessment types, and total minutes minutes to administer each test. A calendar must be published on the FLVS Full-Time Website and also in the FLVS Student Handbook, and a link to the calendar must be provided to the Florida Department of Education by October first. The State Board of Education is approving the template we are to use on August seventeen. The State Board of Education is approving the template we are to use on August 17th. And, uh, we'll have the calendar ready for you by the September 27th meeting. 6.3, the Student Progression Plan helps identify standards for evaluating specific levels of student performance and instructional measures for student progress. Uh, the plan has remained consistent in language from year to year without its made to ensure clarity and compliance with Florida Department of Education rule. Uh, next is 6.4, our School Improvement Plans. And a school improvement plans constitute living documents for each of our FLVS Full-Time Schools. And these plans identify goals and action steps needed for evaluating specific levels of student performance and point out data-driven instructional measures intended to increase student achievement. The plan also includes measures to include achievement gaps and state assessments by one or more subgroups. Each plan's updated as required by the Florida Department of Education and will be publicly accessible on our website. The plans will be finalized with assistance from each school's Advisory Council and submitted to the DOE and will be attached for the September 27th meeting. Item 6.5 is the Approval of Candidate for Service on the FLVS Foundation Board of Directors. As a not-for-profit corporation, the foundation is governed by its own Board of Directors. According to the FLVS Board Policy, candidate for members on the Foundation's Board of Directors must be approved by the FLVS Board of Trustees. We will be asking for consent approval of the appointment of Maxine Gomez as a new member to the Foundation Board of Direct. Uh, 6.6 is the Certification of Fidelity of Implementation of Instructional Materials. Prior to the release of instructional materials funds, each district school superintendent needs to certify to the Commissioner of Education that the district school board has approved a comprehensive staff development plan that supports fidelity of the implementation of instructional materials programs, including verification and training was provided, that the material are being implemented as designed and that for core reading materials and reading intervention materials used in kindergarten through grade five, that the materials meet the Florida statute requirements. Accordingly, the purpose of this agenda item will be to request the board's approval of the Comprehensive Staff Development Plan that supports fidelity of the implementation of instructional materials program. And lastly, 6.7 covers the disposal of assets. At the June 14th quarterly board meeting, the board approved the disposal of certain FLVS tangible assets and personal property in preparation for the move to our new FLVS headquarter offices. During the office move, it was determined that the assets in the attached spreadsheet also qualify for disposal in accordance with the Florida statute. These assets are fully depreciated in accordance with FLVS depreciation schedules and were otherwise expensed at the time of acquisition, uh, those are the non-capitalist and have since been identified as either in excess of or unfit for continued FLVS use. These items were disposed of in a manner that best fits the need of the organization up to and including an open sale, donation to another school district, or otherwise as specified in Section 274 of the Florida statutes. Payment for the item was made, uh, to FLVS and accounted for in the general fund for those items sold. Are there any questions for any of those items in section six?
Well, just a general comment to end on question, I guess. Uh, has, uh, Florida Virtual Schools had any challenges with instructional staff teaching, uh, like, uh, others across the nation? I mean, there's, we're hearing on the news in terms of the shortage of teachers and, and teachers leaving the profession. How, are we, uh, fully staffed in our teaching areas?
Yes, yeah, we are fully staffed and, uh, we're actually prepared to help other school districts and, you know, for, for, uh, some of our programs, if they have, you know, shortage of calculus teachers, certain math teachers or whatever, we have, we have enough teachers to help them in their labs or in their, um, programs.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, section seven, these are proposed discussion items, finance matters. Um, first ones, we'll have finance items for the board's proposed discussion agenda. Corey Wheeler, Senior Director, Financial and Treasury Services, will be reviewing these items. Uh, Corey's on board. Morning, Corey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Item 7.1 is a fiscal year 2122 Budget Amendment Number Four. This item is to request approval of a proposed fourth amendment to the 2122 budget for the purpose of updating the Florida Virtual School Budget for estimate, estimated revenues and appropriation changes in the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Internal Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund. It is currently a placeholder and will be updated with totals and an exhibit A prior to the September 27th quarterly board meeting. Item 7.2 is the Fiscal Year 2223 Budget Amendment Number One. This item is to request approval of a proposed First Amendment to the 2223 budget for the purpose of updating the Florida Virtual School Budget for estimated revenues and appropriation changes in the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, Internal Service Fund, and Enterprise Fund. It is currently a placeholder and will be updated with totals and an exhibit A prior to the September 27th quarterly board meeting. Item 7.3 is the Teacher Salary Increase Allocation Plan. The Teacher Salary Increase Allocation, or TSA, requires that the base salary of all full-time kindergarten through 12th grade public school classroom teachers be brought to a minimum of 47.5. Once that threshold is reached, the remainder of the funds allocated must be directed to classroom teachers who did not get an increase or whose increase was to 47.5 was less than 2% of their base salary. The balance of TSI fun, TSIA funds remaining may then be directed to other instructional personnel as defined in the Education Code. The TSIA Distribution Plan must be submitted to the Florida Department of Education no later than October 1st, 2022. The plan must demonstrate the intent of how the funds will be allocated. The final distribution will vary since final instructional ratings will adjust the number of teachers at each rate and final performance scores will not be available until later this year. FLVS achieved the required 47,500 salary during the 2021 implementation year. We are proposing to increase all teacher salaries for those who earn a final rating on their fiscal year 22, 2122 FLVS evaluation of effective by 3% and those who achieve highly effective by 4%. The FLVSTSIA allocation is $12,811,066 in the 2223 FFP calculation, which includes 8.8 million, uh, allocation for prior year maintenance and 4 million allocation to, for growth of salaries. Once final scores are completed, it is expected that the amount may vary from 12.8 million based on the actual number of employees who receive highly effective ratings. Any variance expected to be approximately 100,000 will be paid from the General Fund and reported to the FLVS Board of Trustees via a budget meeting at, a budget amendment at a board meeting. If approved, this adjustment for eligible teachers will be applied retroactively to July 1st, 2022. Questions? Okay. Item 7.4, Adjustment to the Fiscal Year 2223 Base Salary of Support Staff Not Covered by the TSIA. At the June 14th Quarterly Board Meeting, the board approved the Fiscal Year 2223 Omnibus Salary Schedule, which established minimum to maximum base salary ranges in line with market ranges consistent with the latest compensation study. And is being brought again this meeting to add additional positions in another item. The purpose of this agenda item is to inform the board that employees will be placed within such salary schedule ranges effective July 1st, 2022. Application of the market rates achieved in the Fiscal Year 2223 Omnibus Salary Schedule translates into a minimum 3% increase in the base salary of those who occupy support staff positions not covered by or eligible for the teacher salary increase allocation. The market adjustment will be applied retroactively for all FLVS support staff personnel who occupy positions as of July 1st, 2022. The item is currently written as an action item, but will be revised to an informational item presented under CEO comments since the board has already approved the salary schedules and additional board approval is not required. And then item 7.5 is the Amendment to the Fiscal, FLVS Fiscal Year 2223 Omnibus Salary Schedule. This item proposes an amendment to the Fiscal Year 2223 Omnibus FLVS Salary Schedule, which modifies the information technology dot job title listings by adding the job title Senior Web Developer Pay Grade IT 375. Thank you, and I will now turn it back over to you, Dr. Alguais.
Are there any questions about any of the items in section seven? All right then, thank you, Corey. Section eight for proposed discussion or FLVS policies, first reading, policy revisions and repeals. Uh, next, several of these will be up for first reading. Uh, we'll request the board's authorization to public the text and provide public notice of a hearing on these proposed policies, policy revisions and repeals. Uh, Dr. David Daggett will be reviewing these at the September 27th board meeting. Are there any questions about any of these so far? Right, section nine is the Board Policies Hearing and Adoption Section. We'll have a number of these, uh, which were from the prior meeting for first hearing. And these will be for adoption in agenda item 9.2, no, I'm sorry, 9.1. And for 9.2, we're going to present the 2223 Still Code of, Student Code of Conduct for Hearing and Adoption. All districts are required to adopt the Student Code of Conduct and to distribute to the appropriate stakeholders. Any questions about anything in section nine?
Good.
Section 10, uh, the Organizational Meeting and agenda item 10.1, we will be requesting the establishment of board meeting dates for the remainder of the 2223 fiscal years. Uh, we recommended the following dates of December 6th, March 7th and June 6th in consultation with everyone. Uh, those are the actual quarter meeting dates and within those, we also have the board agenda prep dates selected. For agenda item 10.2, we'll be requesting that we elect the board chair and co-chair at the September 27th quarterly meeting. And at the June 14th, 2022 quarterly meeting, the board established September 27th, 2022 is the date of the combined organizational meeting of the board and the first regularly scheduled meeting of the board for fiscal year 2022 to 23. Also at the June 14th, uh, 2022 quarterly meeting, the board approved the following. To defer the election of a board chair and co-chair until the first quarterly meeting of the board in 202223, consistent with Board Bylaw 2.72. To waive, uh, Board Bylaw 2.73 so that the current chair and co-chair may continue their service beyond their current term of service, which would otherwise have ended June 30th, 2022. And to waive Board Bylaw 2.74 so that the current chair and co-chair may be eligible for nomination and reelection for an additional one-year term. We recommend the board's election of a chair and co-chair whose terms of service shall begin immediately following the conclusion and adjournment of the board's September 27, 22 quarterly meeting. Any questions about section 10?
Just, just one quick, one quick question for you. Um, did we, those, um, policies, um, bylaws were waived just because of the, um, new members on the board? Um, it just didn't make a lot of sense to vote considering that a couple of us have only been here for, um, one or two meetings. Is that correct?
Correct, that was the full intent of that, to give you all the opportunity to get to know each other a little better and participate in some of the meetings. Section 11, General Counsel Comments, Reports and Presentations. I'll turn it over to Dr. Daggett at this time.
So I, uh, was thinking about, uh, requesting, uh, yet another shade meeting, but I'm going to defer that until the next time we meet up, uh, on this 27th. Uh, I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, and express my thanks to, uh, Rob Dealhelm and Lyndy Cowan of the Baker Hostetler Law Firm for their excellent work. Uh, I must give a tip of the hat to our good friend Sam Burgis. Um, and Dr. A. And, uh, you've seen Joanne Sarah quite often. Uh, she was, uh, very instrumental, so was, uh, Kevin Locke with respect to, uh, the D2L matter and, um, also my entire team at, uh, the Office of General Counsel, but, but particularly, uh, Louis Guzman, who is our Senior Assistant General Counsel and Leslie McLaughlin, who's our senior paralegal. Yeah, due to, to their work, we achieved, uh, what I think is a, is a very fair and good, uh, settlement agreement in a rather complicated case. So I just wanted to express my thanks, uh, to everyone. Thanks.
Just out of curiosity, where's that money go into our budget? Is there a certain area that gets reimbursed or anything?
I've urged Dr. A to reimburse the OGC budget, but, um, no, I shall defer to him.
Yes, well, we'll be putting that back into the general fund. And, uh, it'll be dispersed from there to, you know, projects that are needed along the way. Um, all right, thank you, David. Section 12, uh, during my closing remarks on September 27th, I'll provide an update on recent student activities and officially share with you our new FLVS logo. Spoiler alert, it's in our backgrounds. Uh, and the fact that we are making the 25th anniversary or marking the 25th anniversary of Florida Virtual School. Thank you for your participation as always in today's workshop. The September 27th quarterly board meeting agenda will be timely posted for the public. I invite board members to reach out to me directly with any questions or if you wish to clarify anything that we went through today, um, always available to you. Now turn it over to Board Chair Loachret for any closing comments and to formally adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Alguais, and again, thank you to all the, you and all your team for a thorough, uh, agenda and, and overview of the agenda of the coming meeting. Board members, do you have any additional questions or comments at this time?
Chair, uh, thank you. Uh, I wanted to thank David and his team on that settlement that was good. That was a good result for FLVS and apologies for being late. The technology side, uh, I think was on my end, so apologies.
Thank you. Additional comments?
I agree, great job on the settlement. I'd love to, uh, get those things behind us and look, look in the windshield rather than a rearview mirror.
One done, one to go, right, David?
Yep.
That, that's right.
I agree, and thank you for, you, you kept us up to date on all of this stuff, so. Thank you for, it was a great job, thank you. Thanks to everybody.
So now, having reviewed the proposed agenda for September 27th, 2022 quarterly meeting, we'll now proceed to some closing remarks, uh, and adjournment. Uh, first, board members, do you have any additional comments? Uh, Madam Co-Chair, Ms. Ryder?
No, thank you, everyone.
Board Member, Dr. Arsh, Arza?
No, I just wanted to reiterate thanks to, to David and the whole team for getting that settlement organized.
Thank you. Board Member, Ms. Garcia?
Nope, thank you.
Board Member, Con Harris?
I'm good, I said everything.
Thank you, and Board Member, Boswoli?
Uh, same for me. Thank you, guys.
And, and also for me as well, again, uh, I commend the team for all the hard work that they put into preparing us for all these meetings and, uh, uh, look, uh, we're well-prepared for all of our board meetings as we go into it. So thanks to the team at FLVS for that. So, Dr. Alguais, do you have any closing remarks?
I do not, thank you as always. Look forward to, uh, our quarterly board meeting and again, please reach out anything you need from me.
General Counsel, Dr. Dagada, any closing remarks?
I shall defer, thank you.
Thank you, so this concludes today's Agenda Review Workshop Meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Chair, I'm glad we, uh, we adjourned before David had a, a change of heart, wanted to talk some more.
Smart man, he didn't know when I defer too.
I think we're in trouble next time.
That's right, so, all right, thank you, everyone, for attending and prepared for today's meeting and look forward to seeing you all again on September 27th. And hopefully eventually we'll have a face-to-face meeting that we can actually sit around the table and have some side conversations as well, so.
That'd be great.
Looking forward to it. Thanks, everyone, have a great day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.